Good evening and welcome to the March 27th, 2014 special meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen and Sewer Commissioners, the Wareham Finance Committee and the Wareham School Committee. We have the roll call for the Selectmen, please.
President, Selectman Whiteside, Selectman Troppiano, Selectman Holmes, Selectman Slaven, Selectman Tittlebaum, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan.
Okay, at this time we'll ask the Finance Committee to open their meeting.
Present tonight, we have eight members. We have Mr. Tufts, Mr. Camerano, Mr. Worthing, Mrs. Jordan, Mr. Hurd, Mrs. Donahue, and Mrs. Fontaine, Mr. McDonald.
Likewise, the School Committee.
I'd like to open up the School Committee meeting. Present, we have Mr. Swett and also Mr. Flaherty. I'm sure that they're surprised that I'm calling them by those names, but I'd like to call our meeting open.
Okay, just so everybody knows, the three bodies are meeting tonight to hear both more description and discussion of the original budget that's been submitted by the Town Administrator and the School Superintendent, and also discussion and numbers relating to Article VII of the Budget, which was placed on the town meeting warrant by the Board of Selectmen as a placeholder article. Tonight, we're going to hear numbers to be put into that placeholder article that have been developed by the School Department and by the Town Administrator. So with that no further ado, why don't we turn it over to the people who've created this plan and allow them to get started on it?
Okay.
Would you like to?
Yeah, we wanted to do the preamble before they got started.
Oh, that's right, okay. My mistake. Should've looked at your agenda.
And I actually wrote notes this time, which is unusual.
Oh, okay.
First, I want to thank Derek, Kim, Michael, and their staff for the hard work putting the plan and presentation together. Note that this was not a school board, a school plan combined with a general government plan. All parties sat down at the same table and worked on a town plan. We have bright leadership that sees value of working together for a common cause, the Town of Wareham. This is a very positive thing. No secret, we've been dealing with a structural deficit for many years. I can go back at least seven years to see where the Finance Committee discussed this with the Board of Selectmen. Since I've been on the Finance Committee, I know that we've discussed this in joint meetings. And the simplest explanation of a structural deficit is that expenses are growing faster than revenues. While it sounds simple, it's much more complex. We've managed to compound the issue with poor or lack of fiscal management over the last decade. I don't know any other way of saying it, but we have lacked a plan to address the issue, and we've managed to make some unfortunate decisions along the way. We've ignored stabilization and capital needs of the town and forced ourselves into this corner. That is where we need to end the history lesson and go forward. I sat in front of the Board of Selectmen in January and said that we built a framework for a plan. The basics of the plan was not only to address operations, but also stabilization and capital. The plan would combine strategic look at our operations and make changes to how we do business. We would fund stabilization, which is a key component in our interest rate and bond rating. We would review the capital plan and address immediate needs while planning for future needs. Most importantly, we would look at a revenue adjustment, or an override for all the purists here, to accomplish these goals with a distinct eye on the future. I guess I could start by saying what's not in the plan. There are three areas, well, there's a couple areas, that we need to, that we cannot capture in the plan. One is the MLBC certification of the library. The system is archaic and the formula needs to be fixed. MLBC announced yesterday they will study the formula and make changes, so that's a positive step in the right direction there. Chapter 70, school funding formulas, and Chapter 90, funds. There's also an effort, or the start of a conversation, to work with other communities for shared services. I believe that several things are being addressed that you can't quantify in this plan. While we couldn't capture them, they will further position us for the future as they develop. One of the key points I want to point out, a key element of this plan is developing benchmarks and methods for showing the leadership of Wareham will support and embrace sound fiscal management. We clearly have the talent in place. What we need now is a policy or directive from the leadership to review the results versus the plan on either a quarterly or semi-annual basis. This is a critical step so that we can regain the trust of the voters. The last part is, there's two budgets that will be presented at town meeting. They paint a very different contrast. One budget shows, for lack of a better term, cutting our ways, cutting our way into the hands of the state. The contingency budget shows a plan for embracing our roles as leaders and positioning the town for the future.
Thank you very much. This is one, the slideshow was put together with the help of Michael McMillan. I appreciate all his help and everything that has been put into this. So, we're going to start off with that. So, as you can see, over five years from FY15 to FY19, the Town of Wareham will see an increasing gap between revenue and expenditures based on the current proposed FY15 budget. So, if you look at the yellow line there, simply you have the revenues and you have the expenditures creating essentially the Pac-Man effect. And as they're going, as we go out further into the years, you'll see they keep undividing further. The deficits are listed upon the bottom. If you look at FY15, and this is based off of the original budget, you'll see the original budget was closer to $2.9 million. However, we have, Upper Cape Cod Tech came in drastically lower, and to keep that number in there would be artificial right now. And we also included some new revenues. So, we're starting off with FY15. If we did not cut and balance the budget, and we did not have an override or additional revenues from that, you would look at a $1.92 million deficit. And that deficit keeps on growing year in, year out. Till FY19, five years out, you're looking at just under a $5 million deficit. Significant elements of our expenditure grow at a rate faster than our income. This results in a total deficit across five years of around $16.3 million. As you go through, we're starting with FY13, FY14, and then going all the way through FY19. In these, you'll see the items of the general government expenditure, education, employee benefits, some fixed costs, offsets, other budget articles, Upper Cape Cod Tech, and then the lower item are the revenues. And you can see simply the expenditures far exceed the revenues. Continuing in this, you see the, these are the increases in projected revenue. Our tax revenue would, on average, annual increase would be about 3.56 percent. And one of the main items, if you look at it, state aid. State aid staying relatively flat is very difficult for a town like us. We rely heavily upon state aid. So, when there's reductions, or when the increases remain flat, they affect us more than other communities. Local receipts, we're not projecting much higher. Available funds are, and we'll go through at the, so we'll start with the state aid. This projection is based on our estimates for the state aid received in the previous three years, and this year's number from the state governor. Tax revenue, projection based on assuming the authorized two and a half increase, plus an estimate, estimate of new growth. You can only increase the levy base by two and a half percent, but how the tax revenue goes over that is the new growth, new construction, additions, any, any new developments that are picked up. Enterprise direct and indirect from the water pollution control facility, these, these are really, in many ways, they're not income, but the, this, the offsets and the expenditure, they come from the water pollution control facility employees. Since they are an enterprise fund, they should be self-sufficient. However, the town pays for the health benefits, the retirement, the workers' compensation insurance, the regular insurance, and a whole host of other items. Those would be some of the direct. The indirect are the costs of what the employees from the town do for the water pollution control facility, such as when we have legal doing work, myself, the collectors, treasurer collectors' office, the accounting office, doing all the work for the water pollution control facility. Local receipts are the fees and excise that the town can charge. Most of these are forecast to increase slightly, although in FY16, with the new hotel development, we anticipate for that year $135,000 increase in the hotel motel excise tax. Available funds, these are existing funds and revolving accounts that are designated for specific purposes, such as the harbor service permit So, where are the increases in projected expenditures? Let's go over what the expenditures are. General government, that is items such as, when we're considering this, the police, municipal maintenance, the assessing, accounting, administration, town clerks, et cetera. This projection is based on cost, on the cost of living increases. Education, expected increases in staffing costs and other costs in line with history, inflation, such as supplies and materials, contracted services, et cetera. These numbers also reflect considerable reductions already planned in FY15, including closing one school, reorganizing, reorganizing special education, and cutting supplies and materials. Fixed costs, this is forecast to drop based on the existing debt schedule. However, what that means is, the only way this drops is if we do not borrow any more money in the future, and we just go out with our further debt schedule, what we've already planned, and what we already have on the books. Employee benefits, we're forecasting major increases in healthcare, retirement, and workers' compensation. The other budget articles are, would be Upper Cape Cod Tech. Aside from that, the only other budget article expected is for the high school roof. Offsets, we are expecting a large increase in the county and state assessments, including school choice costs. That's where the major increase in the offsets from the state has happened this year. So, if you look at that, the, when you go down the upper right-hand corner, just some of the average increases. Employee benefits, approximately 8.23 percent. The offsets are a large increase at 7.51. So, if you went back to the previous slide where the total average increases are about 2.57 percent, you can see that here our average increases are about 4.32 percent. Doesn't, doesn't seem like a lot until you speak about tens of millions. When you're speaking about a $55 million operating budget, that equates to, you know, 1.7 percent is well over $600,000, $700,000 a year, and that would be cumulative. So, what is the solution to this problem? The solution to this problem is to make significant reductions in our expenditures, to increase our revenue, and to invest in the future of Wareham. Cutting expenditures, reducing non-essential positions and services, consolidating services between the town and schools, closing schools and other town buildings where possible. Increase the local tax rate to increase our revenue by four and a half million dollars. Continue the parking program. Attracting students to increase school choice income. That doesn't just, you can offset that as well by having the, the assessments where students are leaving, which costs us money. That's twofold. And increase the town's new growth by attracting more, more residents and businesses. Invest in the future of Wareham. Financial stability for the town. Invest in the infrastructure improvements, focus on technology, and enhancing reading and math skills in schools. Better staffed police services. With this budget, we'd still plan to make significant cuts in our expenditures to deliver a sustainable budget through the following steps. Restructuring in school programming, reduction in school athletics budget, town and school consolidations, restructuring some town departments. Through additional revenue and making cuts, we would be able to maintain services we currently provide and invest in the town, our financial stability, and measures to save money in the long term. You'll see, we didn't just take the money from the, for one year. We're projecting it out for multiple years, so you can see where it's going. If we start in the salary category, it would be to bring six police recruits. Those numbers include the salaries, benefits, and expenses. If you're putting them through the academy, you have the initial costs. The next item would be additional maintenance staff, salaries and benefits included. And while we need laborers and such, we're also looking at HVAC, people with the certifications to work on the items we have, so we no longer have to rely on high-priced outside contractors. Two floating clerical staff for town. I can imagine, one of the most frustrating things for a resident is to come to town hall, and because we have staff out and they're short-staffed, the office is closed. When you come to town hall, you're looking to do business. You're not looking to see a, see a door that's darkened and be turned away. School and town shared human resources director, salary and benefits. I'll tell you, a human resources director usually will save you money from lawsuits, making sure that what's, what's happening with, with departments, with personnel is happening properly, and that the contracts are adhered to. Having essentially a company, our general fund being $55 million, going over $60 million when you, when you consider the EMS and the water pollution control facility, without a human resources director is crazy. Four additional math and reading specialists for grades one to three. This includes the salary and benefits. This would restore the school's round-three cuts in salaries. That was the last round in order to balance the budget, and they were the ones that were the most, I shouldn't say most hurtful, I'll let the school speak to that, but I can tell that they were, they were very painful for the school. What else can we bring in? Money to the Council on Aging, to the library. Have our police cruiser replacement program, so that our police are not in vehicles that are at 140,000 miles, which have the door welds are cracking, the front ends being rebuilt twice. When you get to that point, it's costing you money to have those vehicles. This will allow us to lease vehicles on three-year leases and continue, and every three years thereafter, purchase new vehicles through leasing program. Stabilization fund, until it is approximately 5 percent of the operating budget. Stabilization fund saves you on the, on your rates when you borrow. When you have issues, such as we had this year with the Department of Revenue, and had to make $500,000 in mid-year cuts, you have $2.5 million in a stabilization fund, they might actually give you a little leeway, instead of having essentially no money. Now, that $500,000, after four years, with the money we've, we have in there, and we plan to put in there at the spring special town meeting, you'll have over $2.8 million, which will represent 5 percent of the operating budget. At that point, you no longer need to budget into the stabilization fund. You've reached a sufficient amount of money. Town and school capital improvement. I think we've seen when we have the roof articles to replace roofs, when we have, when we have rot, we went for, what, the old town hall to repaint it, and because we hadn't been maintaining it, it's now going to cost double the, the price because of all the rot. If you do not take care of what you have, it costs you more in the long run. Recreation and lifeguard program includes summer youth jobs. We're a town without a recreation department. Some towns just seek for the seed money originally, and they can use fees, almost create like an enterprise fund with it. Summer, our, some of our youths during the summer, we're told that part of the issues that they have is, what do they have to do? What if we could put a summer program to have our youths working to help the town, to help clean the town, and give them, give them sort of a sense of purpose and a pride in their own town? The lifeguard program. A seaside community attracting visitors and, and new residents, if you will, with multiple gorgeous beaches without lifeguards. We've had to cut them. It's not something we enjoyed cutting, and I think if we had the money to bring them back, I think it's, it would be an excellent proposition. Improve technology infrastructure for schools. The student one-to-one IT program. Allow our students to compete with those in other communities and be prepared when they enter college. Convert the multi-service center to accommodate the Cooperative and West Academy schools. You'll see, there's a one-time cost for that, and thereafter, in the bottom column for savings, there's multi-years of savings. Let's try and use our buildings to the best Restore school round-three cuts. And you'll see, again, on the bottom part, you'll have savings from the West Academy and Co-op. Energy savings from capital improvements. We're seeking to be reimbursed up to 52 percent from National Grid to replace the lights and the light fixtures, which can have a savings of $180,000 a year on year one, and the savings you can use to reinvest for other energy savings equipment. Overtime reduction from police hirings. Do you want to know why we're paying so much in overtime? We don't have the staff to fill the shifts. As we increase our revenue, reduce our current expenditure, invest in our future, we would see a much healthier budget for the town. As you can see, we have the skyrocketing costs, but as we go through this, you would see what the, what happens with the revenue and expenditures, and that we can close that gap. Without additional revenue, our only option for balancing our budget would be to reduce expenditures. In FY15, this would require all the reductions planned, plus further cuts, and none of the investments planned. FY15 further cuts required via school transportation, savings on the out-of-district runs, other school staff cuts, including teachers and support staff, cutting down to late buses only once a week. Even with these cuts in FY15 to a level-funded budget, there would still be considerable cuts necessary in FY16 and FY19. So, when you see going through there, you'd have cuts to staff, and we're looking, the other cuts would be essentially some of the expenditures, but staff is where you would have to cut. And if you've traced what we've been doing over the last few years, we have been balancing it off of staff cuts. You'll, you would have some, when you cut people, you have some benefit reductions, not in the same year, because that's offset by unemployment. In the next year, you'd have some more. So, I think, when you're looking at this, and the staff cuts necessary, I'd be interested to see, over the next, next four, five years, where people could locate one and a half, two million dollars' worth of cuts in salaries, and see the town still function and the schools still function. With each year, it's becoming more difficult to make the budget without seriously impacting on core services. Making these cuts means fewer teachers and other school staff, fewer police officers, less money spent on maintenance of our buildings, which essentially, I mean, that's tough, because you're going from almost nothing to less than nothing. Less money for technology supplies and materials in our schools, reductions in core town services, less financial stability, meaning higher borrowing rates. And how do you borrow when you don't have the money to pay it back? A budget that is less resilient in the face of unexpected challenges. When you have these one-time hits, when you have the emergencies, you can make it through them. Thank you.
I want to thank Larry for starting us off tonight and kind of setting up the presentation. I wanted to just say a couple words at the end of the presentation, because, basically to understand where I'm coming from when it comes to this. When, we've talked a lot about, at this table together, we've talked a lot about, you know, the rising costs, what's causing those costs, costs that we don't have control over. But I think where it really hit home for me is when I'm taking a look five years out. And when you take a look five years out, will we be able to, and I'm using these terms, nobody else, we'll be able to squeak by this year, sure. Next year, you know what, there'll be less services again, we'll be able to squeak by. But when you take a look at the five-year projection out, and again, the majority of the, the revenue or the expensive increase are things that we cannot control, like staff benefits. So, when you take a look at that projection, I see year three, or even two years from now, when I look at that five-year projection, I'm, I'm seeing devastation. I'm seeing continued staff cuts, not knowing where to go, and that we're, you know, we'll keep coming back and, and asking for money to be able to solve this problem. I hear concerns when we start talking about an override, where there are concerns with trust, that there are concerns with town and school departments, whether they're running the most efficient way that they can. When this presentation first came up, it came from our town leaders. It came from our town administrator, our superintendent, and all of the work that, that Michael put into this presentation, really going through all of the numbers, and where we have been able, where the significant cuts have happened over the past years, and really what we're doing efficiently this year. And I, I felt that the recommendation from them, saying, here's our five-year projection, we're going to be in trouble, we need to do something about this, and that's the reason why I got on board. So, you know, again, when it comes to efficient, I just ask for anyone to really dive into each one of these budgets and each one of the light items, and see where the town and also where the schools are, are spending the money. I want to invest in my town, and I think that when that first, when that slide came up there about investing in Wareham, I want to invest in my town, so then I can see the future that, of services and of the things that have been taken away. I want to invest now. We did a little work, and I thank Jeff Swett for this, with taking a look at our surrounding towns and where they actually passed overrides. And the town right next to us, Bourn, passed an override in 1990, that, you know, a lot of people compare us to Bourn. They passed an override of almost $3 million in 1990 that then allowed them to invest then, so they don't have similar issues that we're facing right now. So, again, I feel that investing now is the right time to do it, to guarantee much more services going forward.
If you go to the Department of Revenue website, and you type in the word override, you're going to get 108 pages of towns that have done this before we have. The reason that you're looking at $4.5 million this year is because we have done nothing about it for years. Had we done it earlier, it would have probably cost us, I think at one point, we looked at somewhere around 2.2 to 2.5 million. But because we continue to put it off, it costs more money. We have catch-up. We certainly have capital needs that we just can't address, and we need to address those as well as stabilization. If we put this off another year, it's going to go up a lot more than $4.5 million, because then we're just another year behind the eight ball. then we're just another year behind the eight ball. And, and I don't, I don't think anybody relishes the idea of an override, but if we're going to invest in our community and we're going to go forward, we need to do something to stop this and position ourselves. There are several things, and, and I, and I wanted to say to Mr. Sullivan that even though we can't control benefits, he has done a good job of reducing how much we are paying for our benefits. So, I don't want anybody to go out there and think we're not doing anything about benefits, because something has been done, and it's a huge chunk of money, so.
Thank you. I'd just like to add on to what Larry said. In putting together the numbers, we understood the concerns that a community would have about an override, and there was a lot of speculation as to what the ideal number would be. The original deficit that we started working with was about 2.5 million. Well, nobody wants to just throw the money at it this year for an operating override. That did not make any sense at all. So we arbitrarily picked a number of 3 and 3.5 million. And 3.5 million was not enough to get us where we needed to be in five years. So we worked with the numbers so that we would have a balance. We worked with cuts, improving efficiencies, and going forward, because I said, I cannot work on supporting an override that doesn't get us to some kind of better future. We cannot maintain the status quo, and we cannot come back to people again in a few years. Can't make any promises, but I feel very comfortable with the numbers, the way they look, the way that the administrators have worked through them, that this is the right number that will get us moving forward and allow us to solve some of our problems, some of the problems that we have, that we haven't been able to address, as Derek mentioned, with regard to the Human Resources Officer, I'm sorry, the HR Director. Also having a town planner. These are positions, although it's, yes, it involves a cost. It's a salary and it's a benefit, but it saves the town in lawsuits and aggravation and other expenses, and in the case of a town planner, will also improve the new revenue coming into the town. It's the kind of idea of what we need our town to be. So I hope if anyone has specific questions about how we work through the framework, that they would ask them, but that was the idea, is what kind of a plan can we put together that gets us to a better place in five years?
I just want to draw people's attention, and this, this document will be going up on the town website for people to see. When you, when you have occasion to look at it, I'd like you to look at page three, and if you want to know, we, we talked about uncontrolled costs. If you really want to know what uncontrolled costs mean, look at fiscal year 2013, employee benefits, $9.855 million. Look at fiscal year 19, projected to be $16,196,000. That's a difference in $6,341,000. That's going up about $900,000 a year if you average it out. That is the big uncontrollable here. As Chairman McDonald said, Mr. Sullivan has done what he can to, to slow the increase. I, I can't say he's been able to cut it. Nobody can cut this stuff. Nobody in the country can cut this stuff. But he's done a good job in, in securing some predictability, I guess is probably the best way to put it, going forward with some of these fixed costs. That's the only reason we're even able to look at a, what I would frankly term a very difficult number here, is that he's done that work. People like to say, well, you know, just do away with things. You don't get to do that in the real world. These employees have contracts. We're talking about current employees with contracts. We're talking about past employees who retired 10 years ago, who are receiving pensions. We have to contribute to the pensions that they're receiving. You know, should this have all been foreseen 20, 25, 30 years ago? Probably. Was it? No. Did anybody in the country do it? Hell, no. And here we are today. It, it gives me no great pleasure to look at the voters and say, what you're giving us, and we understand for many of you, it's hard to give us what you do give us. For many of you, you're, you know, you're making decisions on what you have for dinner based upon what you're already taxed. We understand that. It's difficult for me to say that we need more, but the bottom line is, I've been sitting here for two years. I was hopeful this day wouldn't come. I was hopeful that we wouldn't be able to muddle through. I was hopeful that every single year, we'd be able to go through the exercise, maybe not as, you know, dramatically as we did at the Spring Town Meeting, but that we could whittle a little, little bit away here, whittle a little bit away there, and get away with it. We can't do that anymore. You, you just heard from Rhonda, that, you know, she thinks we can get away with it next year, she's got questions about two years down the road, and three years down the road, forget it. And she's absolutely right. I don't even know about next year. I'm looking at the town side budget, I'm not as familiar with the school items, but I am more familiar with the town side. I'm looking at those, and where do we cut? Do we cut our minimal remaining Council on Aging down to zero? Do we cut the $125,000 that's allocated in the balanced budget for the library down to zero? Do we get rid of two more cops? What do we do here, folks? We're all open to suggestions. I don't think any are forthcoming, but if people can figure out a way to fund the basic services of this government without going down this road, we're all open to hearing it. I, I would suggest that there probably isn't such a way.
The way, the way the budget is set up, and the way the system works with our revenue and expenses, I think Mr. McDonald used the word structural deficit. Structural deficit means your basic expenses and your basic revenue just don't work out. You have the expenses exceeding the revenue. So therefore, our structure of government as we have it, how we do everything today is not working. We actually, as we go along, whichever, whichever way people decide at town meeting to vote, the bottom line is, we've been working on it now, we'll continue to work on it, we're going to have to change how we do things. We are going to have to look at regionalization wherever possible to save money. We're going to have to look at how we do everything differently, because at the end of the day, our expenses, even with this, even with the override, will still have that basic issue behind us every year. So as we go forward, we're going to have to change what we do. It's supposed to be a combination of, if you decide on an override, and also continue to work to find ways to save money, cut our costs down, because that's the only way it's going to work long-term.
Okay. I, I want to commend everybody for working hard to get this thing done. Mr. McDonald, I know you worked tirelessly with your committee. I know the town administrator, the school department, everybody worked pretty hard to put this together. I think this is a necessity. It's something we need as government leaders to present to the people. We need to make sure they have all the facts and what they're going to get for services and all that. That's our job to do that, and we need to do it, and we need to do it right, and we need to give them all the facts. The one thing that I was a little concerned about is, this was understandable to me as he was going through the line items and presenting it, but I think it was a snooze fest for everybody at home. And I think we need to do more of this listing kind of stuff, when we promote this on the website and so on. You know, fewer teachers, like how many? You know, this kind of thing, like, people understand this, they relate to this, they relate to, you know, libraries and beach people and police officers, and they relate to these kinds of things. They don't relate to these numbers very well, although they do, would relate to, okay, if we have this, we get this, this is what we can give you. If we have this, this is what we can give you. You know what I'm saying? So I think we need to work a little bit on that, and I know you've worked hard and tirelessly, and I hate to say, well, let's try to make this a little more simple for people at home, but we're going to have to do that, because we're going to be presenting to a lot of people who really have no idea about government finance, none whatsoever. Matter of fact, I'm not sure I know myself, and I've been doing this a long time, to be honest with you. So it's, it's something that we're going to have to work a little more on, and I'd be happy to help if, if you need my hands or, or my brain or whatever. There's not much of it, but whatever I can do, I'd be happy to help. But we, it's something that I think is going to be important if we're going to get this done and passed, okay? Other than that, nice job. All you folks deserve kudos.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to mention my good friend, Mr. McDonald, Chairman of the Finance Committee, and his group of people that have worked very hard on this. Larry and I have, we love each other as brothers, and sometimes we disagree, but in this case, I actually agree with him.
Oh, boy.
And, so I, is, is, what's his name here from EMS? But I agree with him, but I don't necessarily agree with everybody else who has a stake in this. I agree with him that, one, in the past decade or so, this has been let to lapse. Him and I both agree on that point. So, and I also agree with him, and not because I'm here, certainly I'm not the rocket scientist most people think I am, but I've only been here four years. Some members have been here two years. We have some new members, Mr. Flaherty on the school committee. We have a new town administrator, Mr. Sullivan. We have a new superintendent, Ms. Hood, and you, I don't know if you've heard me, but I'm really, I really enjoy the work you're doing, not that you need me to say you like what, I like what you're doing, but I really do. And this gentleman, I haven't personally met yet, Mike, Mark?
Mike.
And so, the Finance Committee enters a few months ago, and Larry and his team start to develop a plan. The town administrator has, now, he's permanent with us. The Board of Selectmen solidified that, I think, which was a good decision. Some people might not like what we paid him, but if you want somebody to do a good fiscal job in management, you have to pay for the right caliber of people. I mean, Ms. Hood has been here with us for less than a year, and many, many, many compliments from people on the street about the work that she's doing in suggesting these reorganization plans, and looking at, everything is on the table, see? So in those areas, my friend and I agree 100 percent. In some areas where we're beginning to agree is the trust factor. A trust factor, whether, some people want to think that because we're all here friendly, that that's a trust factor. It's not, not at all. When you're talking about going into people's wallets and taking more money, they want to trust that that money is going to the plan. And when you look at the plan, and the plan says, in some areas, and I think Patrick's right, I'd like to see the detail on that, because if you're taking the money and you created a plan that takes away the cuts that these two people have worked on, that's not a very good plan. And that's what people are going to look at. Okay, you took my money for a five-year better future, and I agree that we need to do something. Maybe it's too fast, but we're doing it right now. This seems like it's being jammed, and people want to see the results of their work. We don't, we haven't seen any results of that yet. We've seen ideas, we've seen a plan, but there aren't many results. Regionalization, you look right down the list of Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Hood are talking about, we haven't really done anything yet, except that we've talked about it. Regionalization, Mr. Slavien is working on some regionalization issues. We still have the issue of multiple government functions in Wareham, where next week or the week after, Wareham residents are going to be asked for at least a $1.8 million, the last number I saw, increase in their taxes to pay for a district item. How much is the onset group going to be looking for? In their meetings, say, people need to get involved here. It's not just about this room saying $4.5 million. There's another two there. Is there going to be any in onset? We're looking at sewer fees, increase in people's pocketbook payment to the town. So while I agree with, with having the plan and moving forward, the best idea I heard is, and I tend to agree with this, is let these two people finish doing their work. Let them push the reset button. A good reset button every now and then in a business is not a bad thing. Hit the reset button, and then November, October, don't let all these people go back to having a nice elected position and a committee position. Keep driving, Larry. You got to keep, the work can't end on April 28th, or whenever, well, town meeting can't pass this anyway. You have to have an election to support the override. So the fallacy of getting people to town meeting and voting yes for this budget with an override, it's subject to an override, which still has to come back to the Board of Selectmen, be put on a special ballot, and you have to have an election. Town meeting cannot vote this into reality. So people need to know the components. There's two mixtures there in that theory. People who go to town meeting aren't the people who own the residence, and the people who own the residence are the people who vote in these elections. That's what happened last time. The people who paid the tax bill for their residence are the ones who show up and voted no. So I don't want to go on some long journey with you, but I do agree with my friend in many cases. Do I agree that the date is April 28th and have some emergency election on May 1st, only to have it fail, because people haven't seen a total effort on the part of the leadership yet? I don't think that's worth taking a chance. I think my friend to my right, Mr. Trappiano, has the idea that we need to educate the people of the town. Take the time to educate them. Don't be rushing things through. Continue to let these two good leaders, in my opinion, are probably two of the best this town has seen in a long time. Let them continue to do their work over the summer, and see what more that we can come up with. And let's continue as the Board of Selectmen. We have several regionalization projects we're looking at with towns, with the districts, with the gas stations. Let us continue to do that work, because once this money starts coming in, you see, restate this, restate that, restate this, restate that. It's all money going back to what we've cut. There are plenty of benefits there that I like, but I just think that, you know, and hey, you roll the dice, maybe you get lucky in early May, you don't, but I don't, I don't know that that's going to happen. I don't have a warm and fuzzy that people are going to pass that. So I think we're on the right track. I just don't know that the timetable you set is, is a benefit to the townspeople. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to echo my thanks to everybody who has spent enormous number of hours putting this document together. It absolutely should be up on the website, and there may be some pages that could be expanded upon with more information, but I got to tell you guys and gals, this is the ticket. This is the ticket for taking Wareham from the 1920s to the 2020s. We are, in fact, investing in our town. We have, ladies and gentlemen, who work together on a daily basis to shave dollars, cents, and hundreds of thousands of dollars. This plan was not created overnight. It's been in the works for several months, and I can assure you that my, my belief is that every single one of us believes that this is the only way to go. Now, it's interesting that both Mr. Titlebaum and I probably will swing on Tuesday, because there will be people who think that supporting the override to the people is nuts. I'm willing to take that risk. First of all, the budget will be passed, the regular budget will be passed. Second, the override budget, or the increased revenue budget, will be presented to the town meeting. It is my sincere hope that four million people show up to that meeting and all vote in favor of it. I know we don't have that many voters. The Board of Selectmen, at least the way it's currently constituted, I believe will immediately call it an election, put it on a ballot, and then put it before the people. A ballot box vote is an easier vote to take than one at town meeting where you raise your hand and all other good stuff, but there should be nobody doubting the intent, the thoroughness that this has been through, and, again, with many, many years of fiscal responsibility for very large budgets, this is the only way to go.
I think the, especially around the feedback around this presentation, I know that during this whole entire process and all the work that went into this, again, there was a lot of work that went into this, that I had, I struggled with the fact of how much detail, not enough detail, and it's funny, because when I hear between the two selectmen, one wants more detail, the other one said, no, bring it up high level, and it's the same exact divi- And it's the same exact debate that we had when it came to what needed to be presented here. And it was kind of, let's put, let's do a presentation to the masses in a way. So, then you have a little bit of everything. But I agree with you that when it comes to town meeting and ultimately a town vote, that you have to have very specifics and information that people can understand. So, then they under, it's the same way that I feel whenever I want to reinvest in my own household or in my family, that I do all of the research around it. There has been a lot of work over, I've been on the school committees, this is my second term, but absolutely in the past year and a half of taking a look at consolidation, reconfiguration, well, definitely in the last nine months, but consolidation, configuration, everything that we can do to be able to not cut services when it comes to students. I'm only going to speak from the school side. But how can we continue to increase the level of what we're providing to our kids around their education while also doing it in the most efficient manner? That has to be communicated. The work that the town has done when it comes to making sure that the benefit package is as fair as possible for the employees but also for the town, that work has to be communicated. What also has to be communicated over the last five years is all of the, I would call it devastation and cuts that we've had. You hear about it all the time. It's kind of, it's specific, and we don't have trash cans in onset anymore, or the police department is struggling, the school. It's very, very specific, but you can take a look over the last five years, and there has been major cuts. When I think about whether this has to happen now, or it happens in November, or let's wait until next year, I feel that the town, the leaders that we have and the town administrator and the superintendent and their staff, they are continuing to be fiscally responsible and making do with what they have. But that's the problem. We're not giving them the resources that they actually need to be more flexible and the changes that need to be made so then they can be fiscally responsible. So, that's the reason why I want to do what everybody here feels is important, which is give the voters all of the pieces of information that they need and want so then they can make the best decision for themselves. But I want to do that now, because even though I did say, do I think that we could survive next year or, and how we're surviving is, I still have confidence in what's going on in the classroom. I still have confidence in what's happening from the administration and what we're doing and the changes we're making. But we are doing nowhere near what we should be doing when it comes to educating our children here in Wareham. And that has happened from far back. And so, I think that we need to invest if we can. We need to invest now. And I believe that if we provide the information on what has been done and also what we will invest in, I think the town meeting voters will also get that because of just, I'm a town meeting voter, and I am more involved in this budget, I know, than other people. And I believe that absolutely we should vote for an override. So, I feel that if I can somehow put that same amount of information in the town meeting voters, that we have a better shot of having people want to invest in our future.
I just want to say one thing, one more thing, I'll kind of get out of the way here. I totally agree. We have to get this to people so they understand what we're talking about. And everybody in this room has to get out there and educate everyone, every one of us. And I'll tell you where you got to go. You got to go to the coffee shops and sit there and listen and talk. You got to go to the bars and have a drink and listen to what the people are saying. Because I'll tell you a story. This week, I was in a restaurant, in a particular restaurant, and it was, a gentleman came up and was talking to this other guy about us not plowing the roads. Do you remember the whole big not plowing the road thing? And they said, but, the fire department came in and saved the whole day and said that they forced us to plow the roads. Well, as everybody knows, that's not the truth. What the truth is, is, and I said, well, where'd you hear that? He didn't know me from a hole in the wall. He said, where did you hear that? He said, well, I heard at the coffee shop. See? And it's what gets perpetuated. And this is where we lose all the time, is because these things get said in the places. And just because they're said doesn't mean they're true. And somebody has to go in there and tell them the truth. So, they start saying what's true as they walk out of the coffee shop. So, he says to me, yeah, they did the thing because of the state law, they couldn't plow, and they decided to put it on the ballot and whatever. Because now, if he's walking around telling that story, that's good, because it's the truth. See what I'm saying? This is the kind of thing we've got to get to. This is the kind of way that we got to promote this. It can't be any more hide and seek, you know, let's hide from this whole thing and say, okay, well, hopefully they'll vote for it. Because that ain't going to work. That's just not going to happen. We've got to go out there and say to people the truth so they can perpetuate the truth. Okay, that's all I have to say.
I think you'll say more before it's all done. Thank you very much. I'd like to piggyback on that, because in the time that we were working through this, I was getting a lot of feedback on it as well. And I was hearing from people, giving me their opinions of why they would never vote for an override. And it usually boiled down to because they didn't like someone that worked for the town or they had seen someone do this. And they had some little objection. So, I learned to say, so for $20,000, you're going to sell this town down the road? You're going to give up the chance to make us a better town for some petty grudge because you don't think management is working right? That's not the right venue for it. And Steve, I appreciate, I'm glad to have an elected leader that's looking after our funds. I appreciate that. I also am a taxpayer in this town, and I'm going to take a hit when this override comes in, and I'm going to pay some more money.
You know, Marilyn, I don't necessarily agree with that part about the hit part. I agree with your comments. I think I even said to you one night, hey, just get off of those blog things because it doesn't help. But I don't agree with that. I think if we prove, you have to prove this, and Patrick, sorry, in this line of commenting, that you have to go out and educate people on what this is about. And then, when you prove that your actions, right, are following along with your words, and these two individuals, and I keep going back to those two, because really, those are the two people in this room that count. And by their behavior and their actions, if they're doing what you're professing and teaching, I don't think you take a hit in the end. I think you take a hit, though, if you go out and try to do this quickly and sell it quickly and blindly, and then they go out and spend, it's, then you take a hit.
See, I'm not selling it, I'm not doing this quickly. Six years ago, when I started on the finance committee, I saw a five-year projection. And I was new, and I knew very little about finances. Dominic sat on that, did those numbers. I don't find a copy of it, but I know you looked at those six or seven years ago. And I came out my first week on the finance committee, and I said, oh, my God, in five years, we're going to be insolvent. That was a big word for me back then. But I said, how come no one's doing anything about it? So, for those six years, we've been doing, what do we call it, pulling a rabbit out of a hat, one-time fixes? We don't have any more time, Steve. We're here. This is it. We've been kicking the can down the road. We have hit the end of the road. The can's bouncing back in our face.
But two years ago, two years ago, it was presented badly. It was not well-received, and we got our butts kicked. A town meeting voter means nothing here, by the way, folks. You go to town meeting and get a yes vote. Where you have to win the ballot is at the ballot box.
I'm willing to get my butt kicked, but I'm not willing to not try.
Because this board by itself can vote for a two-and-a-half override and put it on a ballot. We don't need town meeting to do that. But you can win town meeting like we did the last time and then get whipped at the poll. So, anyway, I'll get out of your way.
No, no.
I don't think you take a hit if it's done, if it's done right. I don't think you take a hit.
I just want to clarify one thing that you said.
Actually, you can do it either way. You can put it on the ballot first, then go to town meeting, or you go to town meeting and then put it on the ballot. Either way is correct.
The reason we're doing it at town
But it has to go to both.
The reason we're doing it at town meeting the way that we've chosen to do it is we're going to present two ballots, two budgets. So, the town meeting will vote a budget and a contingency budget. So, if we get an override to pass, we have a budget in place that we can go forward with. So, it's important to put the numbers out there so everyone understands, so we're not scrambling in the fall trying to figure out what to do with the money. Because this is what the beauty is. We actually have a plan. I feel very comfortable that, yes, our professionals have come up with the plan and know what they're doing, and I have confidence in that.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Peter. I have several comments, but first I have a question for our town administrator. I know that you have been phasing in an increased contribution by the employees with respect to health insurance premiums. Could you describe that plan in some detail and quantify the savings that it represents as a part of this plan?
Yes. We worked with the unions to put together a change in the contribution, and I appreciated their help. What it's done is, in FY13, the splits were 75-25, meaning that for every dollar spent, the town contributed 75 cents. The employees contributed 25 cents. So, starting in FY14, the town will contribute 70%, and the employees will have an increase to 30%. And then, for the following five years through FY19, fiscal year 2019, the splits will then go to 67.5, 32.5. Doesn't sound like much, does it, to have that swing? However, with the new projections, the savings to the town will be $5 million, a little over. What that also means is during that time, and this probably won't help me with negotiations, but the employees, the average employee will pay an extra $8,000, $8,300, or every year paying an extra $1,400 roughly. So, they've given back $5 million over a six-year period.
Thank you. So, my comments are the following. And keep in mind that, like many of us, I have literally had minutes to review this document, so these are preliminary, and I don't want any of my comments to suggest I don't appreciate the difficult and hard work and effective work associated with putting this together. But what is truly remarkable about page three is that despite the work of the town administrator to take $5 million out of our expenses, the additional costs associated with employee benefits and offsets dwarfs the total increase in revenue for the town during that entire time. That's equivalent to getting a paycheck and getting increases in your gross, but when you go to cash your check, you realize you actually have a lower net and less money to work with, which unfortunately is exactly what many employees are facing. So, the town is very much like a family and an employee, and it's an untenable position. So, this is a very real, easily understood problem until you start to ask the question of, how can those increases be so rapid and so great? And I know too much about that to go into it this evening. But the fact is that they are real, and they're extraordinary, and there's no mirrors here. They're just real dollars associated with real costs, and they're in two very specific areas, because frankly, offsets, a tremendous amount of offsets are related to employees as well. When I look at page, I think it's the page where it shows what would be restored. It makes me, and when I look at page three as well, the one document that I wish I had, and perhaps that's because I'm like Patrick and like numbers, I wish I could, I wish I knew, had a page of assumptions. Because whenever you do these kinds of spreadsheets, the only way to do them is to have assumptions. And when you're trying to go out to fiscal year 19, the quality of those assumptions, and I'm not suggesting they're bad quality, it's just my need for knowing what they are, the quality of those assumptions makes or breaks the validity and the integrity of the document. So, it would be very helpful to me, and I suspect to others, to know what the assumptions are that built this document. And to my knowledge, and as I said, I've only had a few minutes to look it over, they're not here. And then, the second is a comment and perhaps a question at the same time. I am extraordinarily concerned, and I know there are a lot of people who are more up to date on this than I am, about the need for capital to improve our infrastructure and our equipment. And what I'm looking at in one of the line items is where it says, town and school capital improvements. I see 1.2 million for FY15, and then it actually goes up slightly in FY16, and then it starts to drop, and then it dramatically drops in FY18, and then even more in 19. And don't take this as a criticism, but that strikes me as, perhaps it was almost a plug just so we balance the budget. Because there is no way that, knowing the millions, tens of millions in our capital plan, that our need dropped by that amount. Now, if I'm wrong, I am thrilled to be wrong, but I would like to know why our need for capital, when we have tens of millions of dollars of need based on the capital plan, could drop to as little as $168,000 and $143,000.
It is actually an excellent question. After you funded the stabilization fund, you can then use your free cash dollars. You can use that for the one-time items such as capital.
So, that gets to my assumption. So, what assumptions are you making about free cash?
I would take probably the average three years that we've been having, bringing in close to $1 million a year, especially with when we're, the cuts and some of the other items that we're making. So, you could have $500,000 to up to $1 million, depending on where you stand.
So, those numbers you really need to add maybe $1 million to in terms of access for one-time spending associated with capital. Thank you.
I'm glad he answered that. I was going to... Alan?
Let's stay on page eight for a minute, just so everybody kind of understands. When you do Proposition Two-and-a-half override, the first year, you're allowed to actually state where that money is going. And as everybody knows, or in case they forgot, from that point on going forward, it goes to the general fund. What this has done, for me, is, which I've insisted on a plan to make this worthwhile, this tells us over the five years where that money's going to go. We're actually not going to pass a second budget. If there is an override, the override will be for $4.5 million. In this document, we could be part of it to show you where it's going. Because the first fiscal year 2015, you're going to have to actually list that out. But to me, this is a plan. This is something that we have to stick to, and it's not just the first year. We have to commit to the second, third, fourth, and fifth year as well. And that's what this is showing. So, this gives me hope that we're going to actually follow through and do something. On page, I think Patrick was talking about, page 11. I understand we'd all like to see the actual numbers with each one of these bullet points. The problem is, is that the Board of Selectmen and the school committee have to set policy and guidance of where they like to see the cuts. Then, we have to give that to our town administrator and school superintendent to tell them, this is what you have for dollar cuts, figure out how you're going to make it work. We don't really have a way of saying, how many police, how many teachers are going to come off? Because this is a decision made by how much money has to be cut and where it's going to come from. But these are all the areas where there could be cuts. You could pick one department and completely close it out. You could sit there and take a piece from every piece. So, it's really hard to do that. You could put an example, if you had a dollar amount, so this is what it could be as an example. But unless you're there at that time, that day, you don't know how it's going to work out. This has been a long, hard journey. As everybody said, we knew this five years ago. We're all, you know, everybody basically here, look in the mirror, that's the person whose fault it is, including everybody at town meeting and the residents. This is not new. This has been told to us many times, and we just never really, well, we got money here, we'll plug it this year, plug it that year. Every time you do that, you're deeper in the hole the next year. And the bottom line is that we can't go more than two or three years, and then we're going to come to a halt. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you. Mr. Slavin actually brought up a point I wanted to touch on. He mentioned, you know, if you go back to the page number three?
Three, all right, that's three there. Did you want three or you wanted eight?
No, three. Sorry. Back last year, we Back last year, we didn't seek an override as a school committee, but, oh, thank you. But when we discussed it, I was saying that, you know, that there were a lot of reasons why people didn't vote for it the first time around. And one of them was because it was, you know, it was a school-based override, and people voting for it had no idea where that money was gonna go after year one. And I said, I said, "Well, maybe we can have something, some sort of an MOU with the town, and we'd all get together and we'd say, we'd say, 'Listen, you know, come to an agreement and decide to have a group, you know, a Board of Selectment and a School Committee override, and do what we're doing today, basically, and have some sort of an MOU, and say, 'This is where the money's gonna go.'" And Mr. Swett was chair at the time, and he correctly pointed out that that's illegal. You can't do that. Because you can't, you can't say where the money's gonna go after year one. But what I would do as a taxpayer is I would do, as Alan sort of suggested, and basically treat this, this whole document as a de facto MOU, and it's only as good as the people in this room. And if the people in this room are on board with it, if they vote for it, then they would be held accountable. Now, that's not to say that elections come and go, people can get on the Board of Selectment that don't agree with this, but this is, in my opinion, a de facto MOU for us if we're on board with this.
It's gotta be page eight, Mike.
No.
Yeah, that's the actual, that's the actual budget.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right, the same colors. Yes, so the FY15, like you said, would be the one that we'd, you know, the first year. I mean, that would be set in stone, you know, whatever we decided upon, and then the other years would be, you know, what this group had in mind. And moving on off of that point, I'd like to ask Mr. Sullivan, I had the pleasure of attending that meeting that you and Mr. Sheehan did at the firehouse, and I'm gonna ask the same question there of you that I asked, I'm gonna ask you the same question here that I asked you there, because I thought it was a candid answer, but it needed a bigger audience.
I'll try and respond the same way.
Yeah. Now, you look at, I guess, page, slide two. And here we are, and, you know, looking at FY15, and year after year, we're projecting negative multiple millions of dollars, culminating with five years old with negative almost $5 million. And when I asked you at the firehouse, I said, you know, I'll rephrase it here, because the graph's here, at what point on that graph do we enter receivership?
Yeah, that was the question. You don't necessarily enter receivership. There's a, right away, there's a, the way the DOR would go about is first, they would, they would basically appoint a overseer, I think, and that individual starts, you know, working on, with the towns and such, and there's a sort of a four-step, almost four possibilities, if you will. At some point, when you get taken over and receivership, what happens is you can't set your tax rate. If you cannot set your tax rate, you have to borrow for the funds. And again, that's borrow. You're not getting free money from the state, you're borrowing, so you have to pay those back. And at some point, once that's no longer the option, and there's more issues, that's when the state comes in. And bluntly, in the conversation we had with the Department of Revenue, they said, "No community has ever liked when the state has come in." So, you know, so, you know, the candid answer is, if you're asking me when that's gonna happen, I really can't tell you on the...
Roughly three, four years? At the status quo rate with no changes in revenue, the way we're looking at it right now, about three or four years?
We can't, if we can't set the tax rate, can't put the services in that you're supposed to have, such as police and such, can't do the education, if we go below minimum net school spending, which is where you'd probably be projected out there, that's when you hit it, you hit rock bottom, and that's when they'd be, they'd be coming in. So, if you look at it and what our rising costs are and such, and you tell me in FY19 or even FY18, if you've made $4 million to almost $5 million worth of cuts, what sort of services are you gonna have?
Mike, just as a piece for you, you're talking receivership. The bottom line is, the town has to pass a balanced budget every year. So, the issue, as far as that goes, when the town no longer can pay its bills, but if you have a balanced budget, we continue to pay our bills. So, as Derek said, when you hit these other thresholds, then, like, most of the time when this happens, like Lawrence and some of the other places, it's usually the school department can't meet the minimum standards, the state hits, and then they come in on that, as I think New Bedford was threatened with issues, I'm not sure where they are. But Wareham, as far as financial goes, they can pay their bills, and they're not in a bankruptcy situation per se. So, receivership is not something that's, you hit a certain number, and it happens. The fact is just not there, because every year you're gonna have a balanced budget.
Well, I mean, can you project at what point we won't be able to pay our bills?
No, because every year you're gonna, you're gonna cut more and more.
All right, gotcha.
So, it's gonna be a service-based decision. It's not gonna be a dollar-based decision.
All right. And just one more question, please. What is the, what does this translate to, if we do go this route, for the median householding figure?
Mike, while Derek's digging that up, I just wanted to add one more to the receivership piece. Understand that this is not purely an economic decision by the Department of Revenue, it's also a highly political decision by the state legislature, because they're the ones who have to approve the financial plan to bail you out. In the case of Lawrence, it was in the form of a management board and $24 million loan, as Mr. Sullivan said, a loan. So, it's really big boy kicking the can down the road, I guess is what you could call it. Because they're gonna have to pay that back, or they're gonna be back before the legislature begging for another loan because they can't pay off the first loan. And, you know, the other piece is, when we talk about the political control, when you go to the legislature and you get, and you get in this sort of a situation, they appoint a management board for your town. The management board typically contains seven people. You might get two people from Wareham on that management board, you're gonna get a bunch of state functionaries and the rest of the board, and the chairman of that board is typically going to be the head of local services of the Department of Revenue. They are going to set your tax rate. They are going to take a look at what you're doing and say, "You're not funding the schools enough. We're jacking the tax rate up $2 bucks a thousand. You need more cops. There's another $0.50 a thousand." They will, they will hit you up for the money. It's not as though they come in here and operate with the peanuts that you had that got you into trouble in the first place. They come in and they radically alter your town government, they do it for a number of years until they think that you're stable, and they get out. The other thing is, they don't want to do this. It's a ton of work for them. You can imagine that you're running a major department in the Department of Revenue, now you gotta go run a town, because that's what it boils down to, or a city. They loathe to do this. So, you have to have a lot of political clout to even get in that bad club, which we don't really have. You don't wanna get in that club, because they, the club runs you, and you don't save any money, because they just take it from you anyway. So, receivership is not a great idea.
Not that I was suggesting it was.
No, and I, let me just say that, and I don't think the town meeting voters also appreciate a scare tactic, and I'm not saying that's what we're doing, but when we talk about "do this" or "receivership," I do kind of feel like that's a scare tactic. I agree with all my colleagues that it takes a long time to get there, and that the important thing to talk about is exactly the town having faith in the leaders of this town, that they are being fiscally responsible while also bringing more revenue into the town, and that's what we need to keep talking about. If this conversation continues to be receivership, then again, that's what it's gonna be about. It's gonna be that discussion, and again, I know that I wouldn't appreciate that, you know, a scare tactic of "do this," or you're gonna go into receivership.
It wasn't meant as a, it was just a question, that wasn't...
No, no, but all discussion after that.
It's a good question, because it's gonna come up, Mike's not gonna be the only one to ask that question.
Sure.
And I think, hopefully, people listening heard what the answer is. It's hard as hell to get to, it's hell to go through, and you don't save any money. So, I, hopefully, that puts that conversation to bed entirely. You had another question, Mike, as well?
Just the actual rate per median household.
Yeah, I don't have it for the median, I have the average assessed house value in 2014 per the Department of Revenue is $230,264. That would mean for a $4.5 million override per year, the cost should be $329.34. Or per month, $27.45. Per week, $6.33. Per day, 90 cents. So, simply, here's a simple calculation. If you know the assessed value of your home, if you don't, you can go online, we have that available, you can look it up through the Wareham Assessor's site, which we use the Vision database. So, take your house's assessed value, divide it by $1,000, multiply that by $1.43. You'll probably be off a few cents from the calculation, because we're not going out too far, but that'll give you a good idea. So, again, the assessed value of your home, divided by 1,000, multiply that by $1.43.
But I think it's important that you have a calculator, this type of calculator, on the town website, where you can go, plug in all your information, and you'd be able to get exactly what the amount is.
Thank you.
Am I up? I was on the conference call at the start of this process, I was on the conference call with the DOR, because at the start of this process, my one question was, what does it take to put us in state control? I need to know what it takes to do it. And Mr. Perry was very kind to explain the four levels of state, and the first thing he said to me, and I'll keep this short on that, then I gotta go, because my friend, Stephen Holmes, gave me some heart palpitations earlier. He said, "When the minute you can't set your tax rate, you're in trouble." That's what he said. First thing is, you can't set your tax rate. I don't know if you're aware of what they went through this year to set their tax rate, the half a million dollars. Also, there are several things that made it a little more stringent for next year. So, they're not making it easier for us to set our tax rate. And he's right, they did say they don't wanna come in, so they're already angry before they get here. And so, it's not a good idea, but I agree with you, I'm not interested in talking about that. I do wanna say that not just coffee shops, the YMCA, and if you're busting it on an elliptical and a lady's talking to you about an override...
In the steam room. What's going on in the steam room?
I had a lady try to explain to me why she didn't want an override, why it was ellipticalizing, as he said...
Just so you know, we have the steam room covered. We're okay.
I'm sorry, I wasn't in there. And I've also ridden the bike while having someone discuss it with me. So, I wanna say a couple things. I don't think I said it, or maybe nobody listened, but one of the key elements of planning any, of any plan is developing benchmarks and methods of showing the leadership, where Wareham will support and embrace sound fiscal management. You know, we have the talent, I think we agree, we have the talent. What we need now is policy and directive from the leadership to review the results versus the plan, either quarterly, semiannually, some time period. And I think this is critical, because people do wanna trust us, or maybe they don't, but in order for us to gain trust, we have to show them that we are fiscally responsible. I don't think, I don't think we can wait for them to decide when we're fiscally responsible before we do this, because every year, that override amount goes up. And I can guarantee you, if you wait too long, it's too late. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I agree that we have two exceptionally talented administrators, exceptionally talented. But if I'm an exceptionally talented administrator, which I'm not claiming that I am, you gotta give me something to work with. And if you keep taking things away from me, you're going to have to replace me with somebody who may make more money than me and be less talented, because I don't wanna be here if you're going to continue to take things away from me. This is, it's, we have to be able to do this, and I, and believe me when I tell you, they've done a great job of reducing, reducing numbers and showing us a new way, and I think this is our opportunity to give a little back to help them in the process. The other thing I wanna, I could go on for hours, you know how I am, we can have this discussion later on that part. At some point, it was need versus want. It's no longer need versus want, we're at need versus need. Now, we're making decisions on what's the most important need in this town. We're no longer saying, "Well, we wanted this, but we don't have that, we'll carry the need." Now, we're saying, "We need both of these, which one do we cut?" And that's not acceptable from me as a finance committee chairman, so, and also want us, the reason I think this is more important, and Mr. Swett, honest to God, that was the perfect question, we need to quit being reactive, we need to be proactive. We know that there's things in this that we haven't discussed, free cash being a big issue. We knew that that was out there, and we knew that if we did this this way, then we would be able to adjust our sights on free cash and use it a little bit more over here. It gives us an opportunity to be proactive instead of reactive. We know there're going to be changes, hopefully, you know, maybe, maybe there is gonna be something happen on Chapter 70, and all of a sudden, now we have an influx of cash, because I know you're working hard on that already. If that happens, now we put ourselves in a better position for that money to mean something to us. Now, we're not thinking, now we're not saying, "Thank you, we needed that money just to keep operating," now we're saying, "Thank you, now we can use that money to better our schools." So, and I think one of the reasons that the override failed, because there was, you're right, it didn't, people did not get the information. We have to be very diligent in getting the information out in a format. And I, and like my other two colleagues, I like numbers, but the reality is, some people look at them, they go, "I don't wanna see numbers, I wanna see pictures." So, we're gonna have to be adjustable there, but that's been discussed. It's not something that I think is going to happen before town meeting, but it is something that happens after town meeting. And the last thing, and I promise you, I'll leave you all alone, this is an exceptional finance committee, and people better be aware of that. The things that we have done going into town meeting make us, help us a lot to get our job done. There is more, gonna be, there's going to be more visibility than you've ever seen in that booklet that you're handed out. You'll see the water pollution control facility line item budget, you'll see the EMS budget, you'll see the rules of town meeting, you'll see a glossary of terms, and we'll see these plans with five-year projections. We've asked for five-year projections, because people don't just wanna see this year, they wanna see what it means to them in five years. So, I thank everybody on this committee for working as hard as they have, and I appreciate all the help from everybody else, too, and how hard they work, but I can tell you, this is a good finance committee here.
I agree. Just wanted to be at that out there.
So, I think it's important to talk about next steps. One thing that I've heard loud and clear, and I think that we felt that way going into this, is that there needs to be more eyes on the presentation that goes to town meeting. It's not only the presentation that goes to town meeting, it's recommendations on what pieces of information are missing from the town website, from the school website, when it actually comes to the numbers. Is the information up there right now too confusing? Does it need to be higher level? Does it need to go into more detail? There are specifics that are needed around those pieces, so then, and I'm not only talking from this group, I would love it from this group, but also from the community members, if there is a piece of information that isn't there, tell us about it, so then we can, because when you're way, way deep in the numbers, you feel like you have all the information, but I know a lot of people doesn't, or that they don't. So, please, I think that that's basically a next step, is for, for people from this group to provide more input, not only into the presentation, and get that feedback back to Derek and the superintendent and Michael, but to help us get that presentation ready for town meeting, but also, are there other pieces of information that need to go online? So, if I can ask everyone to do that, and anyone on the community to do that, because like Chairman Tullman said, that this will, this presentation will be up online. The second thing is around that, that education piece about getting out to the coffee shops, and our town administrator and our superintendent have done that, and they're gonna be doing it again, and again, and again. If you have a location, because they have all this free time on their hands, but if you have a location where they can show up, if you yourself would be willing to go out and speak to this presentation, or, or speak to the numbers, or even field questions, we could do multiple ones. But I agree with you, but they have to be done in a way that is public also, so more than just you have it upon somebody at a, at a local restaurant. Like, have as many forms as possible, so people can come and, and get their questions answered, instead of the gossip that goes around online and also offline. So, I see those two, but I'm open to other suggestions that people might have of next steps, but there is a step process, and no one knows better than me that it's the Board of Selectment that's gonna, gonna put this on the ballot or not put this on the ballot, but, and that is a step in this. But our next date right now is town meeting, so if we can get, no, our next date is not...
Our next date is to vote, so we can put it, make sure that it stays on the, on the warrant. That's our next date, I believe, the ninth. That's our next date, I believe, the ninth.
The article is on the warrant.
Okay.
What, 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 what has to be prepared for, for final, for town meeting will be the motion.
No, we'll, we'll, we'll have the motion, we're okay with that.
Patrick?
I just wanna make it clear that there's no, not a question in the world that I wouldn't vote to put this on the ballot, not a question. So, I'm making that clear. No, we haven't put this on the ballot yet, but we will at some point have to vote for that, and I'm telling you right now that I will absolutely do that.
No, just, just so people understand what the process has been, earlier, several weeks ago, we voted to put a placeholder article for an override on the town meeting warrant. We have not yet taken a favorable action vote on what we've heard tonight. To my knowledge, I don't believe the finance committee has either, they've got a meeting that they've gotta do...
We will do ours next week, but I understand that because of elections and other things, that you guys are gonna do it on the ninth, I think, or...
Well, the eighth.
I'm sorry, I, I'm on a Wednesday schedule, you guys are on a Tuesday schedule, so...
We have, we have time blocked out for next week, we are gonna meet briefly. If we get to it, then, if, if it seems like there's gonna be a lot of discussion, we'll put it off till after the election, and then...
The drop dead date for Kelly Barasso to get the information, I believe, is that Thursday, and, because then, we have to go to print.
Yep, we understand that, that everything has to be done by the eighth, so we're aware of that. But, but just to understand, we, you know, we did vote as, as selectmen, with our charter and general laws control over the town meeting warrant, we did vote the placeholder article on there. What we're discussing tonight is the actual motion that's going to go before town meeting, that, in other words, these are what these numbers represent, this is what Mr. Sullivan is going to be presenting, this is what the school superintendent will be speaking to, this is what everybody is going to be discussing, is the, the project that we're gonna be working on now, between now and when the finance committee booklet is published, to get the final product.
Derek and I will be at Riverside tomorrow at 3:00, so if there are any folks that would like to come and ask us questions, we would be very happy to answer.
Thank you. Jeff?
Is it, is it fair to say that this column represents the numbers associated with the motion? Can you... Sorry?
If you look, Jeff, it...
Is it fair to, let me repeat it for...
It averages 4.5 million on average per year.
Right, right. So, it, so, the FY15 column represents the details associated with the motion. Will that level of detail be in the motion, or are you planning a one large number? It's gotta be like that? Good?
Yes.
Okay. So, we, in essence, we, in essence, are looking at the motion.
Yes, you are looking at what you would, you would call the contingency budget.
Exactly.
Which, which lays out where the additional funds would go, to which departments, because the money has to be allocated in a line item fashion, so that's why you're getting this.
Because, in, in essence, town meeting contingent upon the voter of, of the citizens is appropriating that money for the, the...
Correct.
The larger budget.
Absolutely correct.
The appropriation before the...
Before the authorization, you might say.
Yeah. Everybody's looking a little tired here.
I just wanna thank Derek, I mean, I'm sorry, the town administrator, Michael, and the superintendent, for all the work that they put into putting these numbers together and, and the recommendation that really they are making.
I, I, can I echo that, just because I think they're very exceptional, and they've done a wonderful job. I thank them greatly.
Yes, I'd like to thank them as well, I'd also like to thank Larry and Marilyn, in particular, Selectman Slavin, all put a lot of time into this as well, but the lion's share of the work was done by the administrators and Mike. Motion to adjourn?
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those favor?
Aye.
Close the scene. Good night. Thank you, everybody who watched.